Item number three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Did anyone sign in for that? Seeing, hearing none, we'll move on to item number four, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? Any additions Stacy? None? Okay. Hearing no further comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda items. We have approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, approval of the human services report. And then Stacy, you had two more items you wanted to draw our attention to?
Just a couple things to note on Bob's travel request. He's not going to be gone the sixth through the 21st. That's actually the 16th through the 21st. That was a typo, so he asked me to make sure to point that out. And then on the personnel action notices, there was just a typo with this, with Travis Turway. He wasn't part-time, he was actually full-time correctional officer for that resignation. That was the only change there. And I don't know Marty, were we going to request because of that resignation? We didn't, that didn't come in time to get the request to fill vacancy in the packet for this meeting, but is it okay if we go ahead and get that full-time CO position posted and then we'll bring the official request at the next meeting? Okay, we'll get that, we'll get that done moving forward. So we're not sitting on that. That's all I have for that.
Thanks Stacy. Would there be a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six is routine business. So we have first the approval of the claims. Would there be a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, department head reports. We'll start with Jen Burns from Community Health. You get to be first.
Good morning. My name is Jen Burns from the Community Health Office. Again, just a review, I'm one of the nurses in the office. And I've brought Kim Kinner with here with me today. She's our new nurse that started a month ago. So she has replaced or taken the spot of Karen Larson. Karen moved up to a team lead position, so we had an opening. So I thought we would come and introduce Kim this morning to this crowd. So WIC, we've been doing pretty good. Our numbers kind of dropped over COVID, but we're seeing an increase again. So we've been pretty busy in our office. We continue to do, encourage people to come in to do in-person visits, but we still are allowing phone visits if they're requesting because they don't want to come out, or if, if they have a sick family member, then we're encouraging that phone visit. So that's been nice. That waiver, I think, is extended for us through July at this time. So it'll be reevaluated then. Immunizations, we again continue to promote those immunizations, really promote like well child checkups with the providers are just as important as us giving those immunizations in our office. School services, we're on the downhill side. We have a couple of classes left, growth and development to do in a couple of schools, and then those will be completed for this school year. We will be looking at next year's school contracts here in the next month. We continue to see all our pregnant women every month to do that prenatal education. Still giving a fair amount of pack and plays or cribs out as needed to promote that safe sleep education. I talked about staffing. We're doing good with the one clerical in the office. I know we had a drop in that last summer. It's been going good. Office flow is just fine with the one clerical. Melanie, I know, has been doing four, sometimes five days a week, just kind of depends on what the office needs are for staffing. We've updated our one program, so we do WIC, and then our other program, our medical documentation program is now computerized. Yay! So we're learning a whole new computer program and getting away from that paper stuff, which is really nice. It's been nice flowing. So... Anybody have any questions?
Commissioner Pierce?
Yeah.
Yep, we had a pretty good response. I think there was more that came to Bob Hill's office and got, because I know we gave some of ours to him, we kind of shared amongst ourselves. They're gone now. We don't know if anymore are coming, if they were, but we just sent them outside of our doorway. And there was a fair amount. Like I said, there's definitely more that came to the county side of it. But, yep. And then building, no, I think it's okay. Maybe some, maybe some things we can discuss on the side. I know the walls are thinner, so there is some issues with like, we've added sound machines to our offices just to kind of block out the next door room. So that's probably my, and I really noticed it when I changed offices, and there's some, a newer group of people next to us. But I know we've kind of have had some discussion, like, do we look at different offices or not, just because it's pretty, it's, you can hear the talking in between. So then you wonder what they can hear on the other side. But like I said, the noise machines have helped with that.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks ladies.
Thanks.
Highway Department, Brian's out. We got Stacy instead.
Brian is out. You get me. The packet is part of the 2022 Bridge Improvement Grant, big applications, and it looks like there are two this year. Blow that up a little bit. We were number one on the list, we're one structure, and then we were down here at number 16 as well. And in visiting with Brian about that, both of these projects, we're in our five-year plan. As far as budget goes, they're not budgeted for this year. He says they'll probably, you know, like more than likely happen in the next year or two. So we'll be looking at budgeting for those 2023, 2024. But we did receive two of those.
Thank you. Any questions about the Highway Department stuff that maybe Stacy can answer? Moving on, Dustin, BCOIC?
I'll start with attendance and events. We had 255 people through the door for our public hours, 106 in the archery range, and then the gun range, we had 149. We've held 40 events since the last meeting, commission meeting. On the 26th and the 27th of February, the JOAD group that participates in the facility actually went out and got a sponsorship from Runnings, and they held an archery tournament. It turned out very well. We had 88 participants coming from surrounding states. So that was really nice to see in the building. They're planning on doing two of these a year, along with their three pin shoots. 4H is halfway done with their shooting sports season. JOAD started their spring session. Actually, last night, they had a registration, and then they jumped right into their, their 10-week session. We continue to get new customers coming into the building, booking for our classroom. We actually had a gentleman book the archery range for a dog obedience class. That's a new, new event for the facility. Arrow mates continue to fly their little model airplanes on Monday nights. Midwest maidens, they're going to actually start practicing again. So yeah, we've been, been pretty busy. I submitted a report. Was there any questions on that? As you can see, item two, something we've been working on for a while, with the outdoor campus down in Sioux Falls, and Stacy Clausen with the city. She runs the pool as well as the Larson Nature Center. But right now, we're going to hire two interns funded by GFMP. Depending on who we get, we're going to see what their level, I guess their kind of skill sets are, what they feel comfortable teaching. And then we're going to lay out, I guess, some programs and stuff like that for August, September, October, November, December. So that's pretty exciting. And then I know there were some questions last time on the vestibule and kind of the layout of our viewing room we've been working on. So I've submitted some pictures. Is there any questions that I can answer? The first one, that is the vestibule. We're going to build it out of glass. We're going to keep the existing door there and just build this vestibule around it, so we'll have a double-door entry. And then the next one is a drawing we had drawn up of kind of the layout with the desk, because we'll have to move that desk because the vestibule will be in the way. And then we're going to just update it a little bit with your guys' approval. I'm going to present this to the board, working on pricing, and then hopefully present that to the board the end of March, and then bring it to you guys to see if that's something you're willing to do. But new cabinets, some new countertops, some paint, and then we'll have to take care of all the odd and end stuff, like moving some power, and then like the, the door lock, the key card access, probably move that to the outside.
Just questions on wheelchair rail access?
Yep, so it will be ADA compliant. We actually made it bigger than what it needs to be. At, I think we had like 50 inches, but we actually made it, I think it's going to be 84. So a little bit longer, and it still gives us enough room on the other side of that. So wheelchair ADA accessible. Every, everything should meet code. Yeah, you could fit probably three people in there, because the RSOs will probably end up opening the door for a person in a wheelchair or members, depending on how we operate it.
Any other questions?
And then Train was out yesterday and did their first quarter routine service maintenance agreement checks and all that good stuff. Everything checked out good. That's all I had.
Great. Thanks Dustin.
Thanks.
Anything from Marty today?
I've got 20 minutes into five.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Department's been busy with our last snow event. I always say if we have a snow event on a weekend, it's like, it goes pretty good, just because not everybody's in a hurry to get to school and work and so forth. So we had no issues with this last snow event. Have 33 inmates in jail at the present time. In 24/7, we have 63 participants, and we have 12 on remote breath test, 14 on SCRAM, we have 17 on UAs, have 16 in drug court, have three in hope court, two in DUI court, and we have six on GPS. Now, as you recall, the only contract I have out is with Moody County. And to date, we probably have billed out about $10,000 to Moody County for, for inmates. But we're still staying at the low number. You know, I don't want to, we're not rushing into anything, so that's the only contract that I'm really going to offer right now. But I have taken, we do have, are holding one inmate for Vermillion that was desperate. Their jail is only a 72-hour jail, so they only can hold for 72 hours in their jail. Otherwise, they got to move them out to another, another place. So I did take one female from them to help them out. But so far, Matt Christiansen, who's my office manager, is, we kind of devised a new system for billing, and, you know, I think it's working out good for us. And so by the time we open up, and if we offer for more contracts, we should be ready to go. So anyway. Also, just Commissioner Pierce and myself visited a little bit beforehand. There's still some miscommunications with other agencies. Just because I have a juvenile cell, doesn't mean I'm going to hold a juvenile in there for a period of time. You know, we're still following four hours. So I only can hold a juvenile that's committed a crime for four hours. I'm not designated a holdover. So a status offense shouldn't come to my office. Status offense, then that's a runaway, child in need of supervision, and that, whatever agency's working with that, they just need to stay at that agency. They can't, going to drop them off at my place right now, because I have no place to hold that person. So once we get phase two done, and with my safe rooms in that end, then that will be upon approval of the state to be my holdover. But, you know, I get some criticism because they, because I have that juvenile cell, they just want to drop the juvenile off and, and leave. That's, my staff stays, my staff knows what they're supposed to be doing. If we have some other agency trying to drop something, drop a juvenile off that shouldn't, we, we, we resist that. And that, that's, it's because of lawsuits. I mean, I'm not going to get sued over if we're not ready for that. I talked to the state yesterday, and so we're getting going again. Bart and Commissioner Pierce had started the process, and so we'll continue to, I got their compliance monitoring. There's a lot to it before we take over juvenile and so forth. So, and then with the bill, and we never know what the changes are going to be and those types of things, too. So it's just a work in progress and so forth. You know, I'm going to bring a proposal for you. You know, we struggle with them trying to find help in, on the correctional side. And I just see that Lake County now just offered a $2,000 hiring bonus. And I'm not to the point yet that I think we should think about that. But I really do think we need to push into the, to full-time, all full-time, with some part-time to help out when we need it. But it's just that, I think of the last three to four years, we probably went through 46, 47 part-time employees, you know, and rely on SDSU students that, that come and go. By May, I probably lose four or five that have either going to graduate or are going home for the summer. So it's just an ongoing issue for the jail. You know, we're, we're probably a minimum staffing most of the time, which is four, and I like to have it at five. There's times that the booking area is busy, you know. Over the weekend and stuff, I think there was 18, 19 book-ins, you know, between all the agencies, university police, city police, highway patrol and stuff. So it gets to the point that I need to have probably two in booking at busy times and things like that. So it, it's just the point that I think we may just have to look at, we talked about it last year at budget time for full-time, and I think it's, I'll probably come, probably next time with a proposal to, and show you what we're, for training and cost of, of advertising and so forth. Now, at the end of the month, Brookings Radio on the 30th is having a spring job fair, and I've signed up for that. Actually, Stacy's going to come with us at the booth and so forth. And we're going to try to, staff is going to come up with some brochures and some things to show the job of being a correctional officer and so forth. And hopefully, we can get some good candidates for that. And they do so many, it's $300 to, to do this job fair, but you get a certain amount of airtime. They do, they do promotions on air and things like that. So I hope that will, will help, help maybe attract some employees. Also, Dr. Dan Hanson, who, who is, I think he's the dean of the pharmacy up at the college. The last four or five years, he has invited me to come to his class and talk to his honor students. And most of them are, are going to be nurses and pharmacists and things like that. And had a good discussion with, there's about 23 students in there. And after I left, later in the afternoon, I got an email from, from one of their classmates. Now they want to come and tour the jail, which is fine. So we're going to divide them in a couple, couple areas, and they want to come. What we talked about was mental health in the jail setting and so forth. Good group. These got some intelligent kids coming along. So they, these 23 had, got it together. So I was, I was impressed with them. So, and I was impressed that they want to come and look at the facility also. So also, the Cub Scouts, got a Cub Scouts that want to come through, but we do age-appropriate. When the Cub Scouts come, they're going to want to go so far, you know. So I think we will do, start doing a few tours like that. I still limited on programming, because we have to use Pod 5 as a kind of a catch-all for the nurses station and ITV and those types of things. Once we get the facility complete, then we'll be able to open up that pod and, and do some other things. So had some bad news, ordered two Dodge Durangos in October. They, they, they canceled them because can't get the microchips. They're not even going to make them. So they canceled all law enforcement Durangos. So we're scampering to get two Ford Explorers. We did, was able to order them, but the engine that's supposed to come with them, they couldn't get, so we had to, we had to get a different type of engine. Ford can't guarantee that we'll get those patrol cars. So what we'll have to do is just, they'll have to maintain the ones they have, we have. They're, they're over 100,000 miles, but we keep tires and do changes and things like that. So we'll just have to wait and see what, what happens with that. Also, the Human Rights Commission, I've been doing some of the liaison, because they want someone from my office to be a liaison on that. I actually, myself, Kevin Murfield, and Marcy Gebbers is the liaison for the Human Rights Commission. So far, we've just been doing Zoom meetings and so forth, things like that. And I guess that's it. I'm sorry, probably more than five minutes, anyway. Any questions? But Leon, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to get that, that juvenile thing all set up. But we're going to do it the right way and make sure our policies and everything's and procedures are done right. So, yep, thank you.
Great. Thanks Marty. Anything from Lori? And Bob's out for a training around his report in writing. Did anybody have questions about any of that? No? Okay. And Jacob will get to your stuff on the agenda. Did you have anything to report for the office?
Just a quick update from our office. Assessment notices, they were mailed on February 22nd. You probably all got yours in the mail. Those values were set trending last year's market, which we know was a very strong market in Brookings County. So the values increased in some places substantially, but in, in most places in Brookings County, they increased to some degree. So we'll go through those increases in more detail when we get to the County Board of Equalization mid-April. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Thanks. All right. We'll move on to item 8A for regular business. Action to approve agreement number 22-27, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8B, action to approve agreement number 22-28, an application for occupancy of right-of-way for county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Argo Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C, action to approve agreement number 22-29, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Argo Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D, action to approve abatement number 22-26, an abatement application made by NE Hanson LLC for parcel number 04000-11049-202-00, and the amount of $302.39. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Questions?
No, no comment on this one. It's just, it's the city acquired and development on the northeast corner of town. So the exemption from the time they owned it through the end of the year.
Yep. Any further comments? Call the roll, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action to approve abatement number 22-27, an abatement application made by Sun Chase LTD for parcel number 40330-00700-000-02, and the amount of $7,571.32. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
This one here pertains to a South Dakota codified law that states when you have a apartment complex that's offering affordable housing under HUD, several sections under HUD, you can only look at the actual income of the property when determining the income valuation. And that amount for abatement is the difference between the assessment on the property that was derived from market value and the assessment that was derived from the actual income. There's a $480,000 difference between the two values. So that's the amount for abatement.
Sure. Any other questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, an action to approve abatement number 22-28, an application, an abatement application made by John H. Mills for parcel number 40487-00000-0000, and the amount of $119. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any comments on this one?
The rest of the abatements on the agenda today are dealing with the 20th Street South Interchange Project. The owner to complete that project.
Perfect. Any questions from the commission? Nope.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, action to approve abatement number 22-29, an abatement application made by Access Holdings LLC for parcel number 21276-10949-062-00, and the amount of $143.10. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H, action to approve abatement number 22-30, an abatement application made by RCS Development, Inc. for parcel number 40960-10949-062-00, and the amount of $92.98. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Any comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I, action to approve abatement number 22-32, an abatement application made by Western Estates, Western Estates MHP LLC for parcel number 40970-10949-062-00, and the amount of $1.75.
Move approval.
Any comments? Almost two whole dollars. Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item J, action to approve abatement number 22-34, an abatement application made by PMV K. Limited for parcel number 40960-10950-011-00 in the amount of $3.92. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item K, action to approve the low bid for structure improvements and guard rail for structure number 06-112-080 in the amount of $733,672.40 to Prim Construction, Inc. of Slaton, Minnesota. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Comments, Colin?
I would just like to point out, this is part of a, or this is a big project from a few years ago. And when we initially did the application, we had a construction estimate of about $515,000. So that's what the grant is limited to, is 80% of that. So if you move forward with this, everything over that initial 514 will be 100% on the county. So the county share will be closer to 322,000 in lieu of the 103,000 initial. But the bids, if you look at the rest of the bids on the tab, we got a good bid on it. This is part due to, when we initially did the application, it was fall of 2018. Cost index has gone up about 19% since then. The scope of the project got a little bigger, just working with the DOT and what we should do. So there's a little more in there than we initially thought. Again, I still think this is a good project. It's a good rehab project for the structure and I would recommend proceeding with it. But I just want to make you aware that there will be additional funds that weren't initially planned for this, so.
What is the location of the structure? I see the number, but where is that?
This is County Road 6, just west of Bruce, over the Big Sioux.
Okay.
A few years ago, we had hallway construction in and we did some pretty big rehab or repair work to it. And this is just kind of sealing that and finishing that project, so.
This has more to do with the deck, then?
This is the deck and that's part of it. The other part is we are removing the existing back walls and we're gonna be casting the ends of the girders into the back walls to eliminate that open joint. And then adding guard rail. Currently, there's no guard rail on the site, so.
Any other questions? Commissioner Pierce?
I'm just curious, are there any other options that we ought to be considering? Because that's a lot of money over the grant amount. And I understand the uptick in prices, but is there any other direction we ought to be considering going?
We could, you know, look at not doing certain parts. One of the things that got added that wasn't originally planned for was approach slabs. And that's more-
Was what?
Approach slabs on the end of the structure. And that figures to be about $50,000 of the bid. That's something that was really strongly encouraged by the DOT because of what we're doing to the structure, we need to have, provide some movement so we're not, when the bridge lengthens in the heat, it's not pushing on the pavement and we're not putting stress into the structure. So that's why that's there. Now, because we're on a paved road, I think we could, we'd maybe be okay not doing that. You see it other places, but you know, it's, there are a few things we could do to reduce some of the costs, but short of just going out and eliminating the back wall work and everything altogether, there's not much you can do. And the whole, the reason that we were doing that is to eliminate that open joint so that we're eliminating maintenance down the road. So we're not exposing the ends of those girders to the salt and corrosion.
Other than the approach slabs, is there anything else added on to this that wasn't in the original grant application?
We're planning on sealing the concrete, the new, so when we do the new concrete overlay, got a sealer on there as well. That wasn't included before. That's only about 5,000. Those are kind of the big things. You know, we originally had planned for just doing a rail retrofit where we'd put a steel rubber rail in front of the existing bridge rail. Now we're going with just a full concrete parapet on there. The DOT kind of, they recommended it. They say the cost difference is, it's actually about the same, though. Yeah, that's really about all that was added, or those couple of things and just, I think the initial, the scope of it, just, it's more involved than we initially thought it would be to do this project.
Would it be fair to say, Colin, that the scope of the project from when we initially proposed it in 2018 to the current age of the bridge, almost five years later, also impacts the need for additional work? I mean, you've got five more years of age on that structure since we submitted the application as well, right?
Um, I guess, what's the question?
So with more, with another five years that have lapsed since we initially applied for it, it's aged that much more. There's been that much more degradation.
Yeah, there'd be some more. It's hard to say without going out and redrinking the deck. A lot, a lot of that was just in the deck itself.
Sure.
And it's hard to quantify how that changes from year to year.
Sure.
Real subjective, just determining what, what areas need the work anyway, until you actually remove the bad stuff, so.
Any other questions from the commission?
Just one question. What do you think this will do to extend the life expectancy of the bridge? How many years estimate? I mean, it's almost a rehab of the bridge, basically.
It is.
Are we going to extend it 10 years, 20 years, 30 years?
I mean, 10 years is easy.
Easy, 10.
I think, you know, it's, if, you know, I don't want to say more than that, but I mean, I definitely think, you know, it's not gonna be anything I think about in the rest of my career, hopefully, type thing, so.
I mean, we've heard estimates on some of our other bridge rehab projects that were somewhere 15 to 20 years that we've extended the life of a structure.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, on these concrete overlays, I think they usually figure they're, is it a 15-year life before they go back and redo it? But, you know, it could be 20 years. There's other things you can do. If it's still in good shape, you can come back and do an epoxy overlay on top of that. And it's just keeping that deck sealed and keeping it, the water flowing off there and everything else. But the rest of the structure itself, everything looks to be pretty good shape on this structure. Otherwise, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend this if the rest of it wasn't in good shape. And the fact that it's, seems to be adequately sized on the Big Sioux, you know, it's 30-foot clear width on the structure. It's not really substandard. It's still a good width. I still think it's worth pursuing.
And again, as long as I've been on the commission here, we've been proactive in trying to upgrade the structures rather than waiting till they need to be replaced or having issues with weight limits. So I, yeah, this is an extra couple hundred thousand dollars, but I think it's money well spent to be proactive on these structures, so.
And length of the bridge? What is the length of the bridge?
Uh, it's, the current length, it's 232 feet from the end.
It's a quite large bridge.
Yeah. I mean, if, a full-on replacement with today's dollars, it's probably two and a half million dollars at least, so.
Stacy, does Brian have that in his budget, the 233,000? Or would that-
I would have to look. I don't know right off the top of my head if that would be covered in his current budget or not.
During construction, it'll maintain traffic on one side or the other?
Oh, we're just gonna close it entirely. Just because of the back wall work, just make it easier so the contractor can go in, remove the entire back wall on one end, shore the structure up while they do that work. So there'll be a detour. What timeframe do you think? One initial estimate I'd had, you know, we're planning about 105 working days, so that's 21 weeks. I don't know that it'll take that long. Currently, prime, the low bid, I talked to them, their plan would be to get in there sometime midsummer. And we have an October 1 substantial completion, so.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're gonna move back to our scheduled nine o'clock. Thanks for your patience. So nine o'clock, we have an update from Erin Thomas with the Boys and Girls Club. Carly Chapin, Youth Diversion Director.
Why everybody's getting settled? Stacy, next time we meet, could, could we just know where the 233,000 is gonna come from? Thank you.
I'd hate to have you sitting in the back and be part of the program.
Just here for moral support.
All right, great.
All right. Sounds good. So I'm Carly Chapin. I'm the Youth Diversion Director for Brookings County. And we just wanted to come and present to you guys today. Leon sits on my JDAI work group and so she had kind of brought the idea to my attention and we wanted to kind of let you guys know what's going on with diversion in Brookings County, so.
And I'm Erin Thomas. I'm Carly's supervisor at Boys and Girls Club.
So this is the diversion umbrella for, well, I guess that's kind of what we call it anyway. This just encompasses all of the different diversion programs that we have through the teen center, anyway, in partnership with the state's attorney's office. So we have teen court, which I think you guys might be pretty familiar with. So that's cases that get referred from the state's attorney's office. Those are typically lower-level offenses, so petty theft, underage, consumption, truancy. And that's a 120-day program, so about four months that these youth check in with me and then they go through programming. The unique thing about teen court is that it is a sentence made up by people their own age. So a jury of people their own age decide how many community service hours they have, how many activity points they have to get. And the activity points fall under different categories, so academic success, character and citizenship, and healthy lifestyles. So they do activities to get those points. And then upon successful completion, I send a letter to the state's attorney's office recommending dismissal of the charges. And then along with that, we have the Brookings County Youth Diversion Program. So that's a new program through the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Grant that we got in 2020. Yep. And so that is more of a case management approach with higher-level offenses, maybe restitution is owed on those cases. I've had quite a few kids that have been paying restitution through me and then I take it to the state's attorney's office for the victims to be given that money. And then that is also a 120-day program. Like I had mentioned, it's a case management contract that I make with the youth and the family. So the main focus, I would say, and this is really, it's focused specifically on the youth and what, what they have going on. So I look more at like mental health. They, I work with Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness and they do mental health or chemical dependency assessments on those youth. And then like teen court, upon successful completion, there will be no charge on their juvenile record. And then along with the diversion program, we had conditional release, which was set up in Brookings County through the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Grant. And what that is, is a youth, when they come in contact with the law enforcement for a pretty serious charge, or maybe a youth that has had multiple run-ins with police officers, they are able to call down to the intake center in Sioux Falls and they have the risk assessment instrument done on them, which kind of, what that does is it takes a look at the offense that the juvenile just did to be called in and then their history as well to kind of assess if they're a risk or not to themselves or to the community. And then with that, they're able to determine whether the youth should be held in detention, held in shelter care, or released or conditionally released. So far, a lot of our kids that we've seen so far, about 10, have been conditionally released after their first hearing. So what that looks like is I set up a meeting with the family and the juvenile and then they're just kind of on community supervision until they're adjudicated. And then you can go ahead and click over. Do you guys have any questions so far? It's kind of a lot under the umbrella. I go into a little more detail in a little bit here. So these are our numbers in all three programs in 2020 and 2021. So in 2020 for teen court, we had 40 referrals, 2021, 28. And then the Brookings County Youth Diversion Program in 2020, which started in September of 2020, we had 14 referrals. And then 2021, we had 46 referrals. Conditional release, we had one youth and he, or they were actually referred on December 30th of 2020. And so otherwise, all other nine youth have been referred in 2021. And then these, the next few programs are specific to the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Grant, which is the work group that Leon sits on. So this is primarily what we talk about in those meetings. So the Brookings County Conditional Release Program, like I had mentioned, we've had 10 kids so far in that program. We've had 100% success rate so far. And what that means is those youth haven't re-offended from the time they had contact with law enforcement to the time that they were, had their adjudication hearing. And so far through that, we've saved approximately $94,916 county dollars. And that is, where I get that number is from the time that they, or the days that, excuse me, from the time that they had contact with law enforcement to the time that they had their adjudicatory hearing. And then if they were to be placed in shelter care or detention, how many county dollars that would cost to have them in there those days. Not only, I think, you know, it saves the county money, but it also really helps those juveniles to stay in the community with the people, with their support groups and stay in school. We've had multiple kids that keep coming back to the club after these programs and they like to be involved in the program that we have there after school as well. So like I had mentioned, oh, no, you're good. The case process there, I guess I kind of already went through that. So yeah, you're good. So this is just kind of our numbers from 2019 to 2021. And that's how many youth have been held in shelter care. That's their, our average daily attendance. So we had about 86 bed days in 2019, 17 in 2020, and then in 2021, we had 19. So what that means is that's just how many days we've had youth there. And then this is for the detention center in Sioux Falls. In 2019, we had 515 bed days, which I think you had said was a pretty serious case that had gone through that year. 2020 was 63 and 2021 was 38 days. And then the Brookings County Youth Diversion Program, like I mentioned, is the case management approach. 2021, we had 46 cases referred. And like I had mentioned, these youth are typically the higher-level offenders, or maybe they re-offended. And so we're just doing more of the case management approach and individualization approach to, for them and their family. And then teen court, as I mentioned, we had 28 cases referred and it's the less level offenses. And then, like I had mentioned, sentenced by a jury of people their own age. And this is funded from 25,000 through the county and that just goes to support like staffing and program supplies for the Boys and Girls Club. And then we do have, we've been increasing our partnership with the school lately. So since 2020, we had tried to kind of start up a tier program for truancy and that was, I believe, in the second half of school last year. So what that looks like is tier one, we send a letter, or they send a letter to the parent or guardian, just letting them know that they've noticed that their youth has missed a significant amount of- that their youth has missed a significant amount of days. Tier two would be letter to the parent or guardian, and then setting up a success plan meeting. So that is where I get involved. And that's, we sit down and we focus on what the youth needs to attend school and just kind of look at what we can do to get them back into the school. And then that is also where I start to check in with that youth at the school to kind of just judge on what, you know, if that program's working, if they need to be moved to tier three, moved back to tier one. And then tier three would be a teen court referral. So that's when they're still going down that road and are not attending school, then they would be referred to teen court for truancy. And then we also have started with partnership from the Brookings School District, the Bobcat Plains Academy in the teen center. So that's an alternative school that is hosted at the teen center. And I think it's a unique opportunity because a lot of the youth that I see also attend that school. And so it's a way for them to come into my office easily and ask questions or check in. So I've enjoyed having that there. And then we're also able to complete different programming with them through that program. Do you guys have any questions so far? Sorry, I'm kind of just moving on through this. And then, so this is kind of just an overview of the Brookings diversion programs and kind of how they correlate, might work together. So we do, like I mentioned, have a partnership with Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness. So for teen court, they do mental health assessments. And for Brookings, and they do that on all youth who participate in teen court. They have a mental health screening. And then Brookings County Youth Diversion, I'm able to refer for mental health assessments or chemical dependency assessments. And then with the diversion programs, they also are an annual member, or they have an annual membership for the Boys and Girls Club, which gives them access to snack and supper five days a week. And then our impact program, so we have a vast variety of different impact programs, most of which that I refer to are Workforce, which is a career development program. So I might have kids participate in that, or Teens Against Tobacco Use, or Make Vaping History. Those are most of the programs that I focus on when referring diversion cases to them. And then we also have after-school programming that focuses on academic success, character and leadership, and healthy lifestyles. And then both programs, we check in. So the Brookings County Youth Diversion kids check in once a week on Wednesdays. And then the teen court kids check in every other week on Wednesdays. And that, I have my check-in times from 2:30 to 6:00 p.m. And then we have the 180 program, which is a life skills-focused classes that they can participate in from 6:00 to 7:00 each Wednesday. Was that my last slide? All right. Yeah, so is there any questions that you guys have?
When does our grant, our JDAI grant end?
Yes, I just realized that I missed that on the slide with the Brookings County Youth Diversion. So the JDAI grant ends 2023, so after 2023.
And so why that's important for us is that, right now, that grant program, is that $60,000?
Yeah. I think that's per?
Per year.
Per year. Okay, that's, that program is being administered through our finance office, if you recall. I believe that the State's Attorney's Office may, at the end of that, in 2023, will be coming back, and these numbers will be important because either we can pay money out for the JDAI program to continue, which are these diversion programs, or we can go back to the other system where we incur our detention center costs and our court-appointed attorney fee costs for juveniles. So that's just kind of important to keep some of that in mind as we go forward. It's really timely right now with what's going on in peer, with the juvenile justice proposed revision bills, and who knows how that's going to come out. Thank you.
And just to comment on the legislation in peer. As I understand it, the House, so the Senate passed it, and then went over to the House. And then the House amended the bill to only include the summer study. So they took out the portion of the bill that would overhaul the juvenile justice, and they just left in the part to form the summer study committee to study juvenile justice. And then there's going to be members that are from the House, from the Senate. And then the way the bill's written now, the governor will have eight appointments. So then they'll study this issue, and then they're going to make a recommendation to the legislature going into next spring. That will have to go back to the Senate because it was a House amendment from a Senate bill. So it'll have to go back to the Senate to see if the Senate will pass as it's amended, and then ultimately whether or not the governor signs it. For those of you who haven't read my letter to the editor that was published last week in the Register, and then it was put on our Facebook page, I would encourage you to read that. It provides a sort of a synopsis, kind of what Carly just talked about, in terms of how juvenile cases are processed here in Brookings County. There's been a lot of things that have been said by local officials regarding juveniles in Brookings County not receiving a consequence for things that were happening at the high school. I wanted to set the record straight on that particular statement, but also redirect the narrative around juvenile justice in terms of, it's one thing to say there's no consequence. It's another thing to say that you disagree with the type of consequence. Because the type of consequence for nonviolent juvenile. And so they are receiving a consequence. It's different to say that there's no consequences at all. And so I wanted to kind of inform the public and set the record straight on that. I think the numbers speak for themselves. I think what the club is doing has been phenomenal for our youth. And what I didn't get into on that letter to the editor was the fiscal costs. I mean, I just talked about sort of the more, the, how we've reduced recidivism, how it's more of a holistic, how it's more, I think, instructive and modifying for the juvenile's behavior through these programs. But the fiscal point, and to Commissioner, Commissioner Pierce's thing here is that, you know, in the last year and a half, you know, we've saved over $100,000 of incarceration costs as it relates to juveniles. And so this is where it's on the commission. So I would implore the county commissioners to have some hard conversations with our, you know, our local school officials, as well as our legislators, both District 7 and elsewhere, about, does the county commission want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to incarcerate nonviolent juveniles? And if the answer to that is no, then it's not just me, it's not just the club. It has to be from the county commissioners to express that viewpoint to our legislators and our school administrators. Because that, that's sort of the push right now. There's a feeling of frustration that we've exhausted all of these alternatives, and that the mental health issues that the high school here and elsewhere are experiencing, that the easy and more, I think, probably knee-jerk reaction is just to incarcerate them all. I'm not for that. The letter to the editor that I wrote speaks to that, is to why I'm not for that. But the fiscal discussion, I think, now needs to happen as well. I mean, we have a lot of different areas that need a lot of different types of money. And certainly, I think incarcerating mentally ill, nonviolent kids is probably not where we want to spend our money. So I would just encourage the county commissioners, you know, to start talking about that because there's certainly a push in peer and elsewhere to sort of resurrect the DOC juvenile infrastructure that doesn't exist, that will need state dollars. But then to Marty's point, and Dave's here too, but, you know, long-term placement for juveniles here, even in Brookings County, doesn't exist. And instead, you're going to have to spend over $250 a day incarcerating juveniles down in Minnehaha County. And we've seen in the budgets past just how expensive that is. But then also how ineffective it is too. Because the societal cost later down the road, when they're in their 20s, then I'm tasked with sending them to prison as an adult. I mean, I can't tell you how many adult felons that have gone to prison were committed to DOC or spent significant time in juvenile JDC as a juvenile. And so it doesn't work, it's expensive. And I think we need to continue to push these types of programs. And I think the club and I, I mean, we're all very open to constructive criticism in terms of how we can make these programs better. I mean, are they perfect? No, no one's saying they're perfect. But this is part of that step in this evolution of alternative thinking when it comes to juvenile justice. I think the Plains Academy is a great example of that, where you're, you know, you're taking these juveniles maybe out of the high school environment and seeing if they can prosper in a different alternative environment through the Plains Academy. So it'll be a public debate, I mean, here in the next year. I'm certainly willing to have it. And, but I think we have to have some hard conversations about, you know, the fiscal considerations, as well as just sort of this humanitarian issue in terms of like incarceration is not the answer to mental illness. And I also, I think the county commission should look at the mental health survey that the high school did last fall with Chad Adamson, who's the school counselor. He presented that to the school board back in September. I think there's some very concerning and enlightening issues as it relates to mental health in the school district. And so if the commissioners haven't seen that PowerPoint, I would definitely encourage you to look at that. Because it kind of, it bolsters my point about, you know, the real issue and the real root of this is mental illness. It's not widespread violent actions at the high school. And so that's part of this discussion. So, thank you.
The other fiscal part of that is, as a liaison to JDC in Sioux Falls, and I think Commissioner Boersma did two years as liaison, did you ever have a meeting?
They never met.
And we haven't had a meeting this year. But if you're reading the newspaper, and the Argus Leader on the front page had this big article about the financial situation for JDC. And as we know, we pay that daily rate if we have a kid that's in JDC. But we also get a pro-rata, a payment amount that we have to pay in order to fix that facility up. And we will be hit with, if we're doing more detention with a one-two punch fiscally, as relates to not just the daily rate, but how that facility is going to be put back into a condition where kids could be sent. And that might not be a good choice for us.
Commissioner Bartley.
Thank you. Mine's probably a little bit more of a process question than anything else. As you went through the three different areas or focuses of your program, one of them was release back until they're adjudicated. How long a period of time averaged when you released that individual, that juvenile, before their adjudication hearing and moving on? What's, I mean, is it a long time? Is it two days, six days, two weeks, six weeks, eight weeks? What are we looking at?
It's a little of both. So it kind of depends on the process. If the juvenile gets an attorney for their case, it might take a little longer just to go back and forth. But I would say approximately like two weeks.
Two to four weeks.
Yeah, two to four weeks.
Yeah, it can be longer.
Yeah. I mean, we've had cases that have gone, you know, a couple months. But typically, I would say the turnaround has been about like two to four weeks.
Okay, that's a great average, as far as I'm concerned. Two to four weeks is, you know, that's going back to, again, the mental health process where you have an evaluation by Behavioral Health, Brookings Behavioral Health. What timeframe are we looking at there from when you decide you have to have that mental health evaluation? Are they staffed to the point where they can get that done in a timely fashion? Or is that kind of frustrating?
So with that, I know the specific counselor that I work with through Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness is Amber Leafstead. And she works really hard to make sure that they at least have that initial intake within two weeks from when I refer. But then it might take a little longer. You know, if the juvenile wants to be seen every week, it'll take a little longer to get that process started just due to the waitlist that they do have at Brookings Behavioral.
I guess what I'm looking at here is there's that avenue of approach to help you from us on the behavioral health side, funding with staffing and needs with Behavioral Health, Brookings Behavioral Health. So that's, you're telling me that the need is there for additional staffing?
I think, I think mental health is the number one resource the kids in these programs need. Right now too, I think probably 98% of them need a counselor of some sort or a counselor to help them to figure out why are you coping with something that's hurtful and not something that's helpful? So I think, I think for sure that's the number one resource. And then through Boys and Girls Club right now, we do have a really awesome part-time counselor, Chelsea, part-time counselor through Vera, who also assists with some of the kiddos in our programs. But she has started to help seeing those kids at Bobcat Plains Academy too. Because a lot of those kids are not in the high school for the same exact reason. So we're trying to kind of meet in the middle and do the best we can right now between both agencies and Brookings. But it's the number one thing the kids need right now as a counselor.
And I guess from the things I have served in the community with reports from the school and other issues, we seem to, it should have been yesterday that we had this funding in place, and it hasn't happened. But the quicker we can get it to happen, I think it's appropriate right now. Last question I have, I'm sorry. Last question I have basically revolves around the teen court and the peer review of the cases. How are the kids selected for, I'm on the jury here?
So.
Volunteers in certain sections, as they rotate? How do you get those kids to peer review?
So I do have a pretty steady group of about eight kids that volunteer for the program. But then also, part of their sentence is to be on the jury. So I also have kids that are in the program that sit on the jury for other people's cases, which can be beneficial and not so beneficial because sometimes they don't understand why this person is getting a smaller sentence than them, but.
What's your average sentence for someone?
Like.
I mean, is it community service? What's the average?
So for teen court, it's typically like one to five hours of community service. And then they have like one to five education nights. So that's the life skills-based classes that I was referring to. And then they have anywhere from three to six jury sessions, anywhere from 40 to 100 community action points. So that's the activities in the three different categories.
They can also earn that by going to work. If they have late work at school, making sure they get caught up on that, they can earn some points that way to get to that bigger total. So really trying to help them kind of catch up on maybe some of the things they've missed.
And the reason I ask is I think the public sometimes look at these things, what are you making the kids do?
Yeah.
What actually happens in the community, community service hours? Because that tells them that it's worthy versus, now they say they do something. What are they, you know, the public needs to know what happens. So thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the commission? Awesome. Thanks so much, ladies.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll move on to item L. Change order number 12 in the amount of $46,143 for the Detention Center project. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Any discussion?
I kind of gave a rundown in my staff report of what makes up those totals. If there's any questions, I can try to answer them.
Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item M, action to approve a cash transfer in the amount of $1,050,000 from the General Fund 101 to Detention Center Project Fund 304. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval?
Any discussion on this one?
Is that the last transfer then from the general fund?
So this actually goes hand in hand with the supplemental budget that we approved at the last meeting. The cash now has to be transferred to, from.
The cash now has to be transferred to, from General Fund over to the jail fund to now fund that 304 fund for the jail project. So this is kind of the last step in that. And then we'll continue to watch, you know, as the remainder of that jail project and those bills come in, if we need to do another supplemental budget, we will, you know, we'll just kind of watch things. And, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to move it over there unless we have to, so we're going to be watching things fairly closely as, you know, it's still scheduled to be done in June. So that's coming a lot quicker than what everybody thinks. I can't wait for June, so.
Any other discussion on that item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item N, action to approve a $1,500 donation to the Uncle Sam Jam 2022 Fourth of July event. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments on this one? Discussion?
This, this particular event had been canceled the last couple of years due to COVID, and they're getting it going again. So it's the Fourth of July event out at the SwifTeL Center here in Brookings, so.
Any questions or comments, commissioners?
This is primarily, I think, a donation for the fireworks, if I'm not mistaken. It's not for the events that the SwifTeL hosts.
To help pay for some of the fireworks to display that evening.
And I can certainly appreciate that.
Any other comments on this one? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item O, action to declare coat racks as surplus property to be sold via online auction. Is there a motion to approve?
Target.
Any comments on this one?
Just doing a little spring cleaning.
Dustin did reach out to see if there was any other departments that had any use for them, and I believe the answer was no, so we're going to try to sell them, I think, so.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine, Commission Department Director's Report.
It will be short and sweet. I, the only thing that I really have is the executive summary from Chad Nelson for the jail project for February. So that was included in your packet. And other than that, just some upcoming dates that are noted, kind of in the public notices on your agenda, but that's all I have unless you have any questions for me, you know, short report today.
Nothing. State's Attorney's Office report? Item 11, Commissioner Reports and Discussion Items. Commissioner Pierce.
On each Wednesday since our last meeting, I've participated in the call on Wednesday afternoon with our lobbyists through the Public Affairs Committee, looking at the different bills that are out there that would impact us. February 24th, I attended the Domestic Abuse Shelter Board Meeting. On February 25th, we had a Midary Township Drainage Meeting. And, Richard, the two gentlemen that participated on Zoom, what agency were they from again?
They were from the NRCS and the Natural Resources Conservation Service, I believe.
And they seem to be getting more supportive of our drainage project every time we meet with them. So we're taking our next step, moving on with that. On February 26th, we had the legislative forum here in this room that Commissioner Boersma was the moderator and did just a wonderful job with that. And it was a pretty full house, could turn out. Had public affairs meeting on March 3rd. We had a joint jurisdiction meeting the evening of March 3rd. And I think we decided that Luke Mueller from First District is going to send to all the city and county planning and zoning members a copy of what we think might be our final. It'll need some little touch-up things. And then we're going to a public hearing, and maybe Commissioner Bartley, who's on that group, might have more to say about that. And the fun thing that I did is I went out to the BOAC archery finals when Dustin sent out that invitation to all of us if we were interested. I went out and watched that. And I have to say that, you know, when we looked at selling the Resource Center and buying this building from the city and moving forward, or the land from the city and so forth, what was going on at that range on that Sunday afternoon was exactly what we had in mind. There were a ton of people, there were kids to old people that were shooting in the contest, people were participating, it was really run well, he did a great job, the facility looked good, it was really nice. That'd be my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartley.
Just want you to define who old people were. Older than us. I don't think I can shoot an arrow anymore. Anyway, February 23rd, we had a Zoom meeting for First District. It was the annual pre-audit report. Took us about a half an hour, asked us a bunch of questions, and so about the district's financial status and its operations, and it went really well. No issues there, so we'll have our final audit from First District coming up here shortly. The 24th was a jail meeting, we've kind of discussed that, and we moved our stuff over. We are doing part of the ROP. There's an additional part that would probably be advantageous for us to have a discussion and get it completed on whether or not it's a part of the project or a different project or a separate bid. So we'll have to discuss that and get some information from Henry Carlson on that. And the jail, jail's really moving along quite well. It's, I'm optimistic that they'll get it done by the end of June or July here, but it looks like they're confident that they're going to get it done. They haven't changed their completion date at this point, anyway. As Commissioner Pierce had mentioned, the joint jurisdiction, we'd put together a meeting, we got through the last couple items that we needed to discuss jointly. We didn't have a quorum on the city side, we did on the county side, I think we had almost 100% attendance from the county planners. We are going to move forward with getting the final document to us in the next few days for us to review privately and get any suggestions or, as wordsmithing done, I think was the easiest way Commissioner Pierce wanted to look at it for that. We'll also, you know, there is, we'll have this argument later, there is no perfect document, in my opinion, and things will have to change somewhere along the line and down the road. There'll be some issues with, some housing issues the county will have to deal with later on down the road that don't really have anything to do with the joint jurisdiction area, that's pretty well laid out in the program. But there will be public hearings where we can, we can have those discussions. And we'll have to look at it on the county level at some point in time, what we might want to do outside the county, as far as our regulations on building. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
On 24th, also attended jail meeting. Commissioner Bartley covered that pretty well. Seems to be going pretty smooth over there. On the 2nd of March, did have a, attended the Conservation District Meeting. They're ramping up the year, they've got about 25,000 trees to plant, about 400 acres of grass to seed, and they have a issue with, they've ordered a couple tractors for this season through a lease program, and they, they're not sure they're going to get their tractors. So they're kind of looking for options, but they're also looking for employees, again. They did have, the audit is completed, Rickus did the audit. If you want a copy of audit, I do have copies of that. And one other thing, there was a meeting out at the OAC, and some of the Conservation District officials attended, and they're very impressed with the facility, and they're going to be holding some meetings out there in the future. So I think they've already contacted Dustin on that. Yesterday, I attended an Extension Board meeting. We did election of officers. This year, the Extension Board, Ron Parmley will be chair, Rhonda Hultman will be vice chair, and Secretary Laura Stern. They plan on doing the pork barbecue at Achievement Days. There was some, we had some discussion on the horse arena out at the SwifTeL and scheduling, and also with the Holding Barn. Talked a little bit about a possible expansion at the OAC also. One other thing that, there was a gentleman from the state office, state extension office on campus, he just started work up on campus. He comes from Georgia, he used to be a county manager down there, and I did not realize, but a couple weeks ago, he was at our commission meeting, and he complimented how well our meeting went and how well it was run. He said he was really impressed compared to what he was used to, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Krogman.
Yeah, I had a couple meetings. 23rd, we had a beta meeting, and we still have not heard on our grant from the feds yet, so just kind of anxiously waiting to hear. And then they're just kind of doing business as usual here, and trying to keep employees, trying to get full-time. They did hire two more full-time, so that was good, they found some more people, but it's like everybody having a tough time filling positions. We had a Brookings Health meeting on the 28th. We got an update from First Men Can Trust, their investment, Adam Detlinger gave his yearly update of how their funds are invested and going, and they have a pretty conservative approach. And so he said, you know, they didn't do as well when the market was going crazy, but they're also not going to get hit as bad as a lot of people are right now. So, which is probably good when you have funds like that, their conservative approach is probably the best idea, so. But they gave us that update, and they're, you know, chugging along. Obviously, COVID has subsided quite a bit, but they are still taking their precautions in the hospitals, so. So I have.
Sounds good. Mine's super short and sweet as well. The last, slow meeting weeks for me. So the 26th of February, I moderated the legislative forum, and that was it. So, is an executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, parentheses 1 and parentheses 4, personnel and contract negotiations. Do we have a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
We will begin at 10:00 a.m.